Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for December 14th, 2022. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Would you please call the roll?
Wyland.
Here.
Harlan.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Carnes.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Selajin.
Shilby.
Here.
She's here.
Just here? Okay. We have a forum.
Thank you very much. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce a student from Oshkosh North High School who's going to be leading us in the pledge this evening. Kayden Leaderhouse is also a member of the Communities Program at North, and so welcome, Kayden.
Our pledge will adhere to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kayden, we're really appreciative of your time tonight and your chauffeur bringing you here. We're here associating your good work with you.
Thank you.
But it's all about students, and so we really appreciate your taking the time to join us tonight. It means a lot to us because we're here because of students, and so you represent not only North High, but we also 9,000-plus students out there who remind us every day why we are here and who we are served. So, thank you very much for coming. I'm glad for your studies at Oshkosh. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think Kayden has indicated he's probably going to join us this evening, so. That's awesome. Thank you very much. Next, we move on to the land acknowledgement.
Well, actually, let's have Principal Kim Meyer do her North High Spotlight.
All right. Sorry about that. That's okay.
Good evening. I'm super excited to talk a little bit about a collaboration with our ESOL teacher, our English teacher, and Catherine Bryan, professor from UWO. We created a collaboration between our Oshkosh North students and the UWO students, and so 10 to 14 UWO students have come third hour to our newcomer ESOL classrooms every Tuesday through the first semester, where they were able to choose what UWO student they wanted to be paired with. And the majority of these students had our students with refugee backgrounds that came from seven different regions and five different languages. And the cool part is the students were able to practice reading aloud, comprehending various aspects of reading through conversations of the books that they picked out. And they also were able to converse socially with peers that were closer to their ages than just adults in our building, so that was pretty fun to watch. The goals of the collaboration were to focus on educational support, encouraging one another to learn and grow, have an empowering manner, fostering trust through relationships, because that's a big thing with our students with refugee backgrounds. Everything is new to them, and so being able to build those trusting relationships with people that they don't know, recognizing connections between diverse populations, and also demonstrating cultural awareness through communication and interactions. So, those were the goals that were sort of accomplished, and I don't know that we knew exactly what was going to be accomplished when we first started the collaboration, so we were pretty excited to see everything that came out of this experience. We did have a few testimonials from the UWO students, so as impactful as it was for our students at Oshkosh North, the UWO students who are studying to work into schools also had a really positive impact. And just one that I'm going to quote that I thought was really interesting. "The biggest impact from this class would definitely be realizing from my UWO class and experiences in the classroom that these kids had been through harder things than I will ever know, and yet they come to school happy and ready to learn. It taught me that I make myself, I can make myself unhappy, and I can really choose to be happy." So, I thought that was a pretty cool connection that our UWO future educators had, so I was excited to share that with you.
Great.
Thank you very much. Now, we will move on to land acknowledgement with Dr. Davis.
All right, and as a reminder, as we gather today, we'd like to acknowledge that we're in Oshkosh. We're on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present, and we welcome the opportunity, we welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Next, we have board and administrative reports. I'm going to be sharing with the board four sheets of paper and a little overview of a recent training I took part in at CISA VI. Take one and pass one. I've got three, three more of these coming, so just take one and pass one. We have an outstanding Director of Communications in our district, and CISA VI also places an emphasis on communication, and so you're getting copies of three recent, what they call CISA VI Spotlight, highlighting things in the district of roughly 39 school districts in our region. The other sheet that I gave you was an organizer. It's something fairly new to CISA VI. It has a spot for notes on one side, and then as you listen to someone else speaking and sharing ideas, ideas that pop in your head that you might want to follow up on. And as Ted explained this to us, adults usually have their minds thinking about multiple things at a time. Those of you who are parents are thinking about, when do I pick up my child, or when do I have to get to this appointment or that appointment? So, that's the to-do list. That's your, kind of your personal to-do list so that you can refocus on what's being discussed. Then, on the backside is the Plan Do Study Act cycle, just a graphic organizer to take to a meeting, or I suppose you could use this with your family as well, but he introduced it in a professional setting. One of the things that we talked about on December 1st at that meeting was high-performing boards, and it was really gratifying to listen to Ted and to recognize so many things that go on in our district that put our board in the category of being high performance. We've talked about staying below the line, being above the line, that we define the what? Administration defines the how. He also noted the board should regularly review 40 to 50 policies annually. I think we're an overachiever in that category.
Yeah, we are.
In terms of anyone who serves on Policy and Governance Committee knows that we sometimes get that many at one time, one month out of the year. He also noted high-performing boards focus on policy, strategy, leadership, and results, again, things that this board does at a high level. Noted that the superintendent works with the board, not for the board, something we strive to model, that we're really rich in process. We communicate effectively with a common language, and we're proactive. Again, I think those are qualities that apply to this board. He also talked about the notion of swift surveys, rapid surveys that are simple and measure two or less items, where a superintendent might send out a Google survey with only two questions, like, do you have a child in the district? If so, at what level? And do you have, do you support the new initiatives in the reading curriculum? Make it very quick, very short, and hopefully get a good turnaround. So, those were some of the key ideas, and I just thought this graphic organizer was one that some of you might find useful, and if you need more copies, you can do that. Another graphic organizer he shared with us that Dr. Davis and I participated in a meeting today, and I wished I'd had this there because it defines lanes, who's responsible for what, so that we don't cross lanes, and that we stay within our lanes and our areas of responsibility and not be stepping on other people's toes. So, if you'd like a copy of this, I'm also happy to provide that. With that, I'd like to move on to retirements. As I've said before, this is always a bittersweet time because we're losing a lot of institutional memory with people who have been with us for some period of time, but at the same time, we want to encourage them to enjoy this next stage and phase of life known as retirement because they've earned it. So, Jane Gordon has served as a school secretary at Merrill Middle, and she's been employed by the district since the year 2000. And Jane is someone I've valued personally because she's willing to share her thoughts and opinions, and that's helped me as a board member better understand some of the things that go on in our district and in Merrill in particular. Cheryl Graffin is retiring as a payroll manager from Central Administration, and she's been with the district since 2021. Mary Thiel is an impaired vision teacher assistant and serves on a district-wide basis, and she's been with the district since 2010. And finally, Susan Van de Zandee is a cross-categorical teacher assistant at Carl Treger Middle School and has served the district since 1996. So, we want to wish all of these people a long, healthy, and happy retirement. With that, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, so to start Superintendent's Good News Report, I do have not only good news, but great news as we are celebrating our high schools tonight. So, if I could ask high school staff that are here to stand and be recognized by the board and the community, really proud to be able to say the work that these four have done, along with, you know, all of their staffs are really paying some big dividends. It is not easy in 2021, 2022, 2023 to run a high school in our times, and you're looking at some of the best professionals that I've ever seen to be able to really not only do that, but excel and create cultures that are engaging, not only for students, but also for staff. And we have evidence of that as we're, you know, working through our Gallup work. We certainly always have places that we want to go next, but just want to really congratulate all of your work, and we've exceeded expectations for both high schools on the DPI report card. So, just want to just take a moment just to be able to celebrate that. Sometimes we don't do that, as well as maybe we should. So, wanted to do some public recognition for some people that are doing all the behind-the-scenes work in really a difficult leadership time, so just wanted to say thank you, and if we could give them a round of applause. And then, if board members have any, anything else to add to that prior to going on?
Leadership makes a difference, and we're seeing it here. And we have two students in the audience, not only Kayden, but Antonio, who has joined us, who have helped contribute to that. So, we thank you for your contributions to showing what a strong school we have at North, and we also have a strong school at West. Very happy. Any further comments?
Congratulations.
Please.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thanks.
Excellent. All right, so thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
All right, and then to move on. So, Carl Treger Middle School was recently recognized as, by the Wisconsin Response to Intervention Center for its commitment to success in meeting the needs of all students in an inclusive general education classroom. The team at Carl Treger has focused on the universal design lesson planning and challenged themselves to deeply examine how to differentiate instruction. This recognition is a testament to the impact our staff can have within our schools and communities, as well as our ability to be an exemplar for other schools and districts to learn from. So, special shout-out to Principal Jill Pascarella, her leadership team, and the entire Carl Treger Middle School staff for all of the work that they're doing for our students. So, congratulations to everyone involved. Third and fourth graders from Webster Stanley Elementary recently spent their lunch periods making ornaments for the holiday tree at the State Capitol Building. The ornaments were personally delivered by Madison, to Madison by State Representative Gordon Hints, also an Oshkosh North alumni. So, Oshkosh North, English speakers of other languages, our ESOL department that was featured tonight earlier, recently reached a milestone of 100 English learner students enrolled in their school community. We're blessed to have students from all over the world. Many of the North's newest arrivals are from Afghanistan and the Democratic Republic of the Congo area in Africa. The entire staff at North works hard to create a culture of inclusion and belonging for all learners and is proud of our school's diversity. Reed Elementary School recently welcomed over 250 people. What a great turnout during our family night celebration. Families were able to enjoy a meal together, then explore different areas, including reading, writing, math work, math workplaces, robotics, art, cookie decorating, and more. Love to see our families engaged in having fun. The OASD E Academy program recently held a STEAM Day field trip and family night for all K-8 students and families at the Paint Arts Center during the nature of light experience. It was a great opportunity to see everyone engaging in these unique learning opportunities. Fourth graders at Franklin Elementary recently engaged in a service project, writing to members of the Armed Services and thanking them for their service. Students read a book called A Paper Hug and learned about soldiers serving overseas. Then, they created their own paper hugs to send to the uncle of one of their classmates who is currently serving in the United States Army in Africa. Students are hoping these messages will reach soldiers by the holidays. Great work for everybody there. The Oshkosh North Enemy Club recently partnered with Anytime Fitness to provide 425 new toys for the Toys for Tots program, so great job to everyone involved there. And then, a few of our elementary school principals have been engaged in a book study on the book called Hacking Leadership. The principal group is planning to read several different leadership books this year and is excited to learn from each other in each book. Had an opportunity to spend some time at the Riverside Program last week. Students in the Riverside Program made over 60 holiday door decorations for local senior citizens. I was lucky enough to receive one of those that I have up in my office right now. Also, an opportunity to spend time talking with and learning from these students on getting their perspectives on their journeys. So, there's a lot of great work happening there and really proud of all their progress and their aspirations moving forward. So, it was a great, great visit. And we are in musical performance mode across the district, so I just want to take a moment to recognize everybody's musical talents from kindergarten up to 12th grade that exists across the district at all levels. The time of year is filled with many holiday concerts, and it's great to see our students and staff shining on stage. Special thank you to all of our talented staff for the hard work they put in for providing our families, our students' families, and our entire community with such great performances. So, thank you for everybody who's committed that time. A reminder of our COVID-19 plan and its availability on our website as we move through our winter season. And then, just a quick look at a very busy schedule, so, but again, I want to continue to thank everybody for being so accommodating out in the community, so it's been great to connect as we're approaching the holiday season. And that concludes the superintendent's report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. We next move on to district administrator supplemental reports, starting with referendum update with Mr. Fox.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pleased to report, as was in your written report, that we are on schedule and on budget with regard to the Vell Phillips Project. Myron continues to be aggressive with the project. We're completed to date in the last 30 days. There has been continued installation of the building mechanical systems in the middle part of the building, which we call Area C, Area D. That's going to be your classrooms, art rooms, and administration. We've also seen this activity on the first and second floor of A and B, which is your lower portion of your academic tower. Academic Tower, third floor, structural, that's your concrete block, and steel is ongoing. The exterior is pretty well wrapped up for the third floor. They're working on their load-bearing interiors so they can set their building steel. That is ongoing, or most of that is completed now. Academic Tower, non-load-bearing wall installation is ongoing. Exterior spray foam installation is ongoing, and many of these are going to be photos that I will share with you in just a second. The fieldhouse roof has been installed. Fieldhouse support offices, so that's going to be your fire office, your shower rooms, locker rooms, second floor, mechanical spaces, your workout space, all of that. Concrete has been poured. Block filler and sheet rock finish. We have a photo of this to show you as well as is being done on second floor, Area C. So, you'll start to get a sense of what that pre-finished look of a classroom will look like, if you will. Temporary heat has been added to first and second floor, building section A, B, C, D, and also includes the fieldhouse now. So, all those areas are heated for contractors as we dry concrete and make them a better working condition for the employees as well. So, pictures to share, starting in the upper left is a picture of the western side of the cafeteria. Gives you a look of the second floor art rooms yet to be finished on the cafeteria side. Those walls will be going in this next week. Lower floor is going to be your serveri and facelab. Middle top is opposite. That'll be on the eastern side of the cafeteria, looking at the cafeteria side of the administrative area, first floor. Second floor, some educational office spaces. Top right, again, is a different perspective of your administrative wall on the cafeteria side. Lower left, second floor, southern part of the cafeteria, is a look at your maker space. You can see how they're forming a soffit around ductwork and starting to give those infrastructure pieces. That'll give it a finished look. Middle picture lower is a look at what will be your reception area for Vell Phillips. To your right, next to that pallet of ductwork, is the secure entrance to give you some perspective of where you are. And in the back, you can see the door going into the hallway where the principal's offices, APs, and Ds work. And lower right is one of the special ed classrooms, where we had mentioned that we are coating the CMU walls. You can see that white is in a concrete block wall that they've got the coating applied, and you can see the sheet rock is up and the seams are muddied. So, that's what's going on currently in special ed wing, Area C. As we step outside before the snow, you can see top left gives you a sense of the insulation, both top left and top right. Top left is done, that's your southern elevation. Top right will be the western elevation toward Jackson Street. You can see how they're progressing through the buildings with the spray foam, adding windows, which you'll see in the center picture. There, the windows have been installed on the first and second floor, and then they're going to cover them with plastic as a spray foam, and then ultimately add the exterior facade. Lower left is your gymnasium. I know we had a very similar picture last month. Here, you can't see through the deck. The four-ply roofing system is on, with the exception of the very top granular coat, which will go on in the springtime. And then, lower picture, lower right, excuse me, is a picture of the third floor. You can see the exterior of the third floor is standing. They're just finishing the exterior walls, and then they'll work on some of the interiors. You can see in the lower right-hand corner of that picture, the will be the start of a CMU wall for that particular floor. We expect those walls to be up and building steel to be placed within the coming weeks. So, speaking of which, what will we expect to see happening in the next month? Again, continued installation of building mechanical systems, working on sections A, B, C, and D. However, C is really nearing completion for mechanical systems, working, starting to work toward finishes in that area as far as walls are concerned. Fieldhouse, we'll see the concrete, grade-level concrete being poured, that's the concrete for the floor of the fieldhouse. That is occurring next week. Air handlers will then be added. Missed land is HVAC equipment will be craned into the mechanical spaces for the fieldhouse, and that area will be buttoned up. Building section B and C wall construction will be completed. That is your cafeteria. We've been talking about this for, it feels like, quite a while, but they'll be finishing up that open wall that we saw for the serveri and for the facelab, and that will include all of your stud walls, the CMU walls. They'll be done, at least with the construction side of that. Academic Tower, third floor, interior, exterior, load-bearing walls will be completed in the next month, and then they'll start setting building steel, and then they can build the roof, finish the roof, and then they can open it up for heat, and then you'll start to see your mechanicals enter that area. The clear story, which is that centerpiece above the cafeteria, as well as mechanical room for Section C, we'll get there. Exterior steel panels, that's the finished steel panel that really will only be able to see from a distance. And then, window blocking, exterior foam installation, Section A will be completed, and that is the section of the building that I just showed you that has the windows in the lower two sections. So, that insulation that they were spray foaming, the insulation that they were spray foaming along the western exposure, they're going to wrap around the building and continue to work in a clockwise manner until they get to the main office. That was a lot of quick information, but any questions on the Vell Phillips Project or where we are today?
Can't wait to see it tomorrow.
I was going to say, a reminder of the tour tomorrow. So, yeah, you'll be able to see it in person, so it's going to be great.
Yeah, very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Nihans, who's going to present us with the Budget Variance Esser Funds update.
So, to, I know we've had a little bit of a break between the budget variance and the Esser reports. As we begin a new school year, typically because there's a little bit of a lag in these reports, there's not a lot to report out the first couple months of a new fiscal year. So, to recap, the reports you have are operating budget, Fund 10 and Fund 27. As of the date of your report in here, it's running behind budget, but the end-of-year projection is projecting that we're going to have a surplus. I know that doesn't sound like it makes sense and it goes together, but what has happened in this report is we go through a three, two to three payrolls a year where we have a month where we have three payrolls in a month instead of two, and at this report, that's what happened. This report, the previous trend hadn't had a three payroll a month this early in the fiscal year. We hit it, so that's why at this point, it looks like our budgets, our spending's a little out of whack, but that's also explaining why at the end of the year, we're showing that the actual expenditures are coming ahead of trend and ahead of the budget. So, that's kind of what's happening in there. The food service is running well, and we're expecting an end-of-year surplus at this point. Again, it's still pretty early in the year, but that's a good sign at this point, especially coming off of a two- or three-year period where lunches and breakfasts were all free, and now for some of our schools, we've gone back to paid breakfast and lunch. So, we did not see the backlash that we expected to see and the pullback within those programs. So, that program is running really well. On the Esser part of the reporting, just to kind of recap and refresh everyone, the Esser funds, there is three funds within the Essers. Given throughout the COVID period, Esser 1 was completed two years ago. Esser 2, we were in last year, and Esser 3 is going to be this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So, we are trying to save some of that money for next year because right now, we have no idea what the biennium budget's going to bring, so we're holding some money back to kind of hedge what our budget could look like in the biennium budget. Typically, we have not been getting increases within the revenue limit, and there's not a lot of word out right now of what Madison's going to do for us, so it's a little more prudent to kind of hold some of that back. The Esser 1 and 2 has primarily been claimed at this point. We had $800,000 left in Esser 2 that we are preparing a claim to happen by the end of the calendar year for that, and we are just waiting on DPI down in Madison to approve our Esser 3 budget, which is in the $9 million range, so we can start making our claims in for the Esser 3. Any questions?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, we have Dr. Gunlock and Mr. Summers to tell us about cybersecurity.
Not something you normally have at a board meeting, but I've been to conferences, and they highly recommend that the school board knows what we're doing, even the governor's summit meeting, they suggested, that we bring it to the board. Over the past few years, we've been hearing about school districts getting hit more and more, and we've been taking steps along the way to make sure that we're not the low-hanging fruit for these attackers. During the last two years, we've taken concentrated efforts to be more proactive, to keep the student data student data safe, our staff data safe. A portion of our tech team meets, they started meeting monthly on this, and now we meet weekly, creating a plan so that we're not going to be attacked, or if we are, we can mitigate that. As the plan came together, did I go the wrong way? Did I do? As the plan came together, we started out with education, and we continue to offer that for our staff. We've created data privacy and protection procedures. We've created training for these, as well as we do phishing training and phishing attempts and ransomware. Recently, the IT team implemented a yearly training for all existing staff, and all new staff get to face-to-face training as well. As recently as today, during the DTT meeting, we were asked to, you know, maybe we should start doing this for our students as well. So more on that, I guess, coming as the DTT moves with that. As technology in the education sector got better and more economical, we did move many of our users from the more vulnerable Windows machines to Chromebooks. And while the Chrome devices are very economical, and they've proven to be very good, actually are preferred, we are finding that even the, there is no operating system that's bulletproof, so we're constantly getting notifications to upgrade our Windows machines, our Mac machines, and our Chrome. We noticed that as some of the schools and businesses around our area were getting hit, the cost of remediating these attacks continued to go up. The latest state figures that the governor's conference estimates that it's $180 a record for every, that it will cost the school district for when you're attacked. And for a district like ours, if you figure current and former students, current and former employees, and current and former parents, it's a more than $50,000 record, so it's like $9 million. So we've been implementing some things. We've introduced an EDR package, and basically that just means endpoint detection. We have software that sit on all of our Windows machines and all of our Mac machines that runs 24 by 7, and it looks for malicious activities, and it looks for malicious behavior, and if it finds a process it doesn't like, or thinks it's suspicious, it'll shut it down, and if it can't, it will isolate that machine from the network and from infecting other computers. We also patch monthly, and we're taking other steps to keep our software going. We have been moving and are implementing with our, hopefully with our new network system, a zero-trust model. Ron or Wagon always had, you know, trust but verify. We're going with verified first, and then we trust it. So the data team is now looking at who has access to what, what systems and where, and our network people are doing things to make sure that we know every machine that's on our network. And once a month, we get together and we remove all machines and all staff members and all rules that no longer apply. And then finally, last year, we met with our insurance company, because we wanted to make sure that we needed to do what we needed to do to be insured. We've gone to conferences and sessions, we've met with businesses that are experts in this, and then we took our plan and we put it to paper, not only in the, not only electronic paper, but like paper, paper, because if you're attacked, we've learned for some of the schools that got hit, if it's on your network and your network's, you know, secured or hacked, you can't get to them anymore. So we've actually printed out a copy. There's a plan in the data center, and the plan, it spells out what we need to do, who we need to call, and more importantly, what we shouldn't do. There are things, and there are words, and there are terms, and there's communication to the news media that you just don't do. We kind of let the insurance company handle those communications. And we're not done. We continue to keep up, and we go to sessions and learn, and we meet weekly, and I'm not brazen enough to say that we won't be hit, but we're doing everything we can to make sure that if we are hit, the risk is minimal and the damage is minimal. So we have our fingers crossed.
One other piece to the plan is, we have a data team that meets weekly. It really started as approving access rights into Infinite Campus, our student information system, who had access to what, who could see what. That's really where it started. But it grew. We began to add people from HR, we added people from our special ed team, we added people from the curricular team and the assessment team, because it just seemed to expand, the access requests expanded. That team evaluates any changes in access and makes decisions on a weekly basis. A big part of the planning around cybersecurity is limiting access to only what you need to do your job. That protects the individual so that if I don't have access to something, that limits what can be accessed through me, and that's really a good thing. So we've been working really hard on that and communicating out any of those changes and any of the differences as we go. Some of them are popular, some of them aren't quite so popular, but it's all geared around making sure that people have access to what they need, and they don't necessarily have access to the things that they don't need, and all designed around keeping kids safe and keeping parent and student data safe. So, any questions?
Thank you for your report. I know this is a topic that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards takes very seriously and works through a series of vendors and folks related to the insurance industry, because this is a big, this is a big deal, and it does impact our insurance rates as well, and it's also very disruptive when things don't go right despite your best efforts. So it's reassuring to know that you're really on top of this, so thank you. Next, we have IT 2206-1, E-Rate Switch Project Request for Proposal, or RFP, from Dr. Gunlock.
This is just a written report about a switch project. Every about six to seven years, we replace the switch and wireless access infrastructure in the district. One of the advantages of us having a referendum that supports our technologies, we can use smart purchasing in what we do. Some districts have to piecemeal their networking equipment, and that can become pretty expensive. We bundle it all into one big bid, and what that does, that drives the cost down quite a bit. As you can see in the staff report, there was a lot of variation in the cost from the different vendors, and we chose the lower-cost option, and that will replace all the switch gear that is in the district. Most people don't know what the switch gear does, and that means we're doing our job, because the stuff just works. But it replaces all the edge switches, it replaces all the access points, and probably the biggest change that's occurred over the years is this switch equipment provides electricity. All of the phones and all of the access points and all the security cameras draw electricity from these switches, so it's almost as much about electricity being delivered to the device as it is the data that comes and flows through the device. So we are recommending that Capital Data and Extreme Networks be the vendor that we work with. The reason we're bringing this to you so early in the season, so to speak, is because we know there may be some product availability issues, and we want to get our order in place as soon as we can. So I'd be happy to take any questions. One small other piece is, this is an E-Rate project. We are projecting a 60% discount, so that would come off of the dollar amount you see in the staff report. So it's about a $1.3 million amount. You'll notice we went with a slightly more expensive one from Extreme. What that's doing is, that's buying us the most modern wireless access points. They're faster, they're going to last longer, and they're more available, because what vendors are doing is they are allocating their chipsets to the most advanced products. So it just works for us in that. So it'd be 60% discount off of the $1.3 million. Any questions?
Is this part of the 2020 referendum?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So that's part of the infrastructure piece, that is, was part of the 2014 referendum, and then the 2020 referendum continued that spending.
Very good. Other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for your vision in moving the district forward in this way. Next, we have other reports, starting with the Education Committee.
Yes, so we met on Thursday, December 1st at 8:00 AM, and again, I'm not going to go into this, because as last time, we had already talked about it, and the rest of this we are going to talk about tonight in depth. It's ready for us to go to, so the only thing that might not get mentioned that I'll mention from our meeting was the Attendance Matters Campaign that is hitting the district that I know that I've seen in my house and as well, so an idea to make everyone know how important it is to be in school and what gets missed when not in school. So otherwise, as I said, we'll discuss the rest of that meeting in a little bit. Next meeting will be Thursday, January 5th.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Carnes, and next we will hear from the Policy and Governance Committee.
Thank you, President Herzog. The Policy and Governance Committee met on December 6th of this year, and we discussed a whole bunch of policies. It got us close to our 40 in one meeting. And I could go through all of them, but I will just summarize. We discussed independent educational evaluation. The policy was revised to clarify the procedures when the cost of an IEE is more than the district's maximum allowable cost. In order to match the current legal standards, we recommended, the revision was required to be in legal compliance. We did policy 8740, protection of district funds. The new policy has language to reflect that while few school, while few school districts, if any, require surety bonding, most have the same protections for the district through various standard insurance policies. And then another one we did was policy 5113, open enrollment. This policy has been reorganized to make it easier for districts to use when evaluating open enrollment applications, and to include clarification regarding preferential processing of applications for siblings of any selected in the random application process. So we went through a whole bunch of stuff. That's just a few of them, A through X. They all are going, are on our consent agenda tonight, so if anyone wants to pull one or whatnot and discuss it, we can, but that's it. Our next meeting for Policy and Governance will be on January 10th, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I need to take a step back here and take a look at the approval of the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to move anything that's remaining on the agenda to a different location on the agenda? Okay, then we will accept the agenda by acclamation. Accept the agenda as written by acclamation. Okay, we will move on now to non-agenda public-related forum. We have one individual who has signed up tonight. Let me just quickly go over the ground rules we're presenting.
It's not going to be too controversial.
Okay, just let me finish the, probably I'll take longer to read this than you probably will take, but let me, bear with me, please. Please clearly state your name and full address and the topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, we ask that you indicate the group you represent. Please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel by title or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such cases, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 920-424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Thank you for bearing with me.
Absolutely.
Now, we'd like to hear your name and address.
All right. My name is Tom Cannon, 1009 Eastman Street, and I am here to talk just briefly about the poet laureate program in Oshkosh. I'm the inaugural poet laureate kind of this year. So my role is to foster creativity and artistic expression, and I've been focusing on how poetry and any types of writing is a path to emotional well-being. I just think the more that we write, the more that we journal, poetry's a great way to find out about ourselves, and it leads to a better culture. I also think that when we listen to poems by other people, we learn more about the similarities and the differences between us. And as a poet laureate, I've held workshops, and I've written two poems celebrating Oshkosh, promoting National Transit Equity Day. And so with that in mind, I just wanted to offer my services, if there's any English class, or if somebody's doing a poetry unit, and they'd like me to come speak to their class, do a workshop on poetry, just talk about the importance of it. I'd love to do it. National Poetry Month is a great time, but I can do it anytime. And if anybody does want to schedule an event, you know, they can just Google "Oshkosh Poet Laureate." They can go to my gmail, @thomascanonauthor@gmail.com. It's on the Oshkosh Public Library website, things like that.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's delightful to meet you.
Thank you.
All right. There is no one who has signed up for the agenda-related public forum, so we will move on to our first and only workshop this evening. Ms. Conrad has prepared a very thorough workshop for us tonight on the district and school report cards, so welcome, Ms. Conrad.
Thank you, and thanks for, thank you for having me this evening to talk about our district and school report cards. Our district and school report cards are a key progress indicator, a key measure, when it comes to how we are doing on our strategic plan. More specifically, focusing on Goal 1, improving student learning for college career and community readiness, we're going to see areas there that are pointed out in our school and district report cards. Also, this provides an opportunity, Goal 5, to engage our community in conversations, and also work-based learning and other programs are highlighted in the district report card. So in our school report card, there are four priority areas, student achievement, and we talked about student achievement in our last report when we were talking about data and accountability. The next area is student growth. This is an area that we are going to highlight tonight and is unique to the school and district report cards, a target group, and then also our on-track-to-graduation area. The priority areas are weighted equally, 25% or a quarter each for each priority area. And each district is weighted differently based on the number of students that qualify for free and reduced lunch, or are referred to as economically disadvantaged. For this year's school report card, our student achievement is weighted at 20%. Our student growth is weighted at 30%, and our target group and on-track-to-graduation are each weighted at 25%. When you dive deeper into individual schools, you'll notice that schools that have a higher percentage of students on free and reduced lunch, or qualify for free and reduced lunch, that growth area, our student growth weighting, is much higher, and you'll see why that we are, we are very much celebrating, and we're looking at growth across our schools because of that. So this year, this is the cover page for our school report card, and by the way, our school report card is available on our website underneath school curriculum, as well as in the board packet. And each school had their school report card sent out to their school community and families, their individual report cards. So as a district, we overall met expectations at 68.7%. This is down a little bit from last year, but still in the upper area of this category, so we're looking for that 1.3 to get us over that, to get us into that exceeds expectation as a district. Then off to the right, you can see where the priority area weightings are, and then where our scores are within each of the priority areas. Keep in mind that when you are looking at your priority area scores, you're looking at this as a score out of 100. It is not a percentage, and so we'll dive a little bit deeper into where those scores come from. But when we look at the achievement areas, you can see that for each subject, it shows how does our score compare to, for that particular area, compared to other K through 12 districts in the state. Then with growth, we're going to highlight that one, because growth is one of our highest-weighted categories, and it is our category that we have excelled in here in the Oshkosh area school district. And you can see that both for English Language Arts and Mathematics, we outperform our K-12 sister districts. Then we have our target group. In our target group, I will talk more about that, but it's basically a mini-report card for students that need to, that we're looking to improve. They are the lowest-scoring quadrant or quartile within our school district on standardized tests. And then on-track-to-graduation looks at chronic absenteeism, so thank you, Mr. Carnes, for giving us a plug for our Attendance Matters Campaign, as we are working on reducing chronic absenteeism, our graduation rate. And then it's asked quite frequently why third-grade English and English Language Arts, and why eighth-grade mathematics are included in on-track-to-graduation, and those are key indicators when we look at our students on track for graduation. So third-grade reading and eighth-grade math are leading indicators of where we may need... of where we may, may need to support students when it comes to graduation. So let's go into our area of strength here in the Oshkosh area school district, which is our growth priority area. On the pages that show, go in-depth in each of the priority areas, you'll notice that there'll be a chart that shows where does this district score compared to other districts in the state. And so for the Oshkosh area school district, we score 80, we score higher than 82.6% of the other districts in the state. So when we talk about that this is an area of strength, it really is when we look at that compared to all other districts in the state with our score, our growth scores in there. When we take a look at growth scores, is looking at student scores from the grade before to this last grade for this, I'm going to mess this up here for the spring of 2022. There you go. We're already looking forward to spring of 2023. And so how much did they grow? So students in grades that are currently in grades four through 12 are included in this, in this report. Not involved in the calculations, but we consider this one of the most important pages when it comes to our school and district report card, is looking at the student group value-added information. And so what it does is it takes a student's score from the year before and says, if this student was growing, was growing at a typical rate, like one year's growth in one year's time, compared to their, compared to their peers in that demographic group, are we on track for typical growth? Are students outgrowing their peers, or are students growing slower than their peers in that particular group? And where you want to be, it's on a scale of six, zero to six. And where we want to be is three is typical growth. We want to be to the right of that line, or we want to be in solid blue across there. And you can see, and this is, this is a great, this is a celebration, that in every single one of our categories, we are at typical growth or better for every single student group. So this is, you know, our high schools are the ones, when you get into looking at their particular school report cards and where they excelled, our high schools had some of the highest growth in the whole state when compared to other high schools. A key area that we look at, and we are looking at through school improvement programs, and where do we need to support schools, where do we need to look at curriculum, is down at the very bottom where we look at students that were proficient last year compared to students that were not proficient the year before and how they are growing. We take a look at that at each school and say, you know, how are we supporting not only our students that are struggling, but how are we also challenging our students so that, that are scoring proficient, and we keep them growing as well? So that's also an area when we look at school improvement plans that we are paying attention to. So when I refer to Goal Number Five, when it comes to community engagement and partnerships, this is the page on the school report card that we want to be paying attention to. And it's really talking about post-secondary preparation. What are students doing and how are we getting them ready to be college, career, and community-ready? Data on this page and data on the next page, when we're talking about enrollment in arts courses, is based on the 2021 school year. Next year's, it's a lagging, year or lagging indicator, and it shows enrollment. You can see where we are in advanced courses, and this is for students in grades nine through 12 compared to the state. And so I want to point out is, first you look at advanced courses, and you can see that we have 12.2% of our high school students are involved in advanced courses. But pause there for a second, you're going to go, that's way below the state average. And what that counts, and the only thing that's counting, is advanced placement or AP courses. And so we do, we absolutely have AP courses offered at both of our high schools. But the key is, is one of our key partners is UW-Oshkosh, which is right in our, right in our community. And so if you look at dual enrollment, we are at 22% of our students are enrolled in dual, have successfully completed and enrolled in dual-credit courses, higher than the, higher than the state average. And that includes our Fox Valley Technical College dual-credit courses and UW-Oshkosh and CAP courses. Then the next part, and this is an area that we're working on in Goal Number Five, is industry-recognized credentials. Are students graduating with those industry-recognized credentials? And you can see the number of students that have qualified for that. And so those would be graduates with, like, for example, Certified Nursing Assistant Certificate, or Certified Nursing Certificate, or Microsoft Office Specialist. Those would be areas of recognized credential. And then another area that we're currently working on is how many youth apprentices or work-based learning did we have? And we are sitting at 43 students, keeping in mind that COVID and the pandemic really impacted our ability to partner and do our work-based learning programs. But that is something we're working on in Goal Number Five. This next area is looking at arts, arts course information. And then if you take a look at this of where we are as a district compared to the state, we have, we're above average for the percentage of students in art and design courses. We do not offer any dance courses for credit, but we do have extracurriculars that involve dance. Music, we are above the state when it comes to participation in music in grades nine through 12. Keep in mind that these are courses for credit in grades nine through 12, and then also the same in theater. So having a really strong arts core, arts courses, fine arts within our school district at both high schools. And then here is our trend over time when it comes to school report cards or district report cards. And keep in mind, the first report card was issued back in 2013, so almost 10 years that we've been looking at these accountability scores. So before I go into the next part of the presentation, I want to pause for a second and see if anybody has any, any questions.
I'll start.
Okay, go ahead.
So I believe it was last year when we had updated curriculum and included pep band and offered credits that way. I'm assuming that, obviously, that helps us with, with more engagement in music, and we see that in the music and the arts and theater that we are, you know, up. I mean, that's...
Correct. And actually, the, the part with pep band or zero hour, we also did magicals, offering that as a zero-hour course. That happened, that's actually coming up in the next year, so we're expecting to see that number increase as well from recent course approvals that the board did in October.
And then the other thing I'll, I'll talk about is, it's amazing how, when this came out, and I've been in a few schools and talking to people, but the joy that people feel when they see the growth numbers, it really is, it's really powerful to feel that. And not saying that we, we don't have areas to improve, but like, that's kind of the most important piece of that, right? Like, it's going to go, so I just have been very happy to hear that, you know, we toss, you know, staff engagement and everything else up, that that's, that's a big piece.
Correct. And we have to start with growth. We are never going to hit our rigorous attainment goals or academic goals if we're not seeing growth, and growth from all students. So going back to that area where we talked about proficient last year versus not proficient last year, we also have to, we have to see growth in every single student to hit our rigorous reading and math goals and attainment goals we've set. So going on to this next part is, we look at our Oshkosh area school district comparables. So how, how are we doing? So that, you know, it's great to look at it from the parts of the school report card, but how are we doing compared to our comparables or sister districts? And so what we have here for comparables, our districts, if you take a look, that are similar in enrollment and similar in demographic, and how are they performing with their overall accountability score? And so you can see, this is where Oshkosh, when we take, is, lands when we take a look at our comparables. And that's usually with, with size. So something to be proud of. Then we also take a look at, Dr. Herzog had talked about CISA VI and our partnerships and our learning that we are doing within the region. And so where, where is Oshkosh performing compared to our CISA school districts within the region? And this is where Oshkosh is within the CISA VI region, and we are one of the bigger school districts within the CISA VI region. So another piece that we take a look at is, keep in mind that there are other factors and other things that are reported on our district and school report cards. But we also know that the percent of students that are economically disadvantaged tends to be one of the leading predictors of how, of how a school district or how a school is going to score on these accountability pieces. So what we're trying to do in our challenge is, is to break, do you understand what I'm saying? Is to break that mold, right? To push the, to push the curve. And so when you look at the overall accountability score for the 32 largest districts in the state compared to the percent economically disadvantaged, you can see that there's a direct relationship between the score and where we, and the percent of economically disadvantaged students. So we want to, we want to break that trend. And so where we want to be is to the right, and as far to the right of that trend line as we possibly can. And you can see this is where the Oshkosh area school district lands compared to the other 32 largest districts. So then you may ask, well, where, what does that look like for all 423 districts in the state of Wisconsin? And this is where Oshkosh area school district lands. Once again, we want to be to the right of that trend line. And once again, there is that direct relationship between the overall accountability score and the percent of economically disadvantaged students. But when we take a look at this analysis, what we really want to know is, what, we have school districts that are out there that are circled, that are, have similar percent economically, percentage of economically disadvantaged students and high accountability scores. So who are they and what they're doing? What are they doing? So we take a look at it, and it ends up that those school districts that are out there are very small, elementary-only districts, such as South Shore, North Lakeland Elementary, where you're talking about 200 or less students when you're looking at, at change in being able to deliver curriculum and instruction in those areas. So it goes back again to, you know, how are we partnering and looking at sister districts that have, that are comparable to us and have the same, either the same highlights, struggles, needs, et cetera, so that we can be collaborating? But we always are looking for, we're effective practices so that we can improve. So going into each of our schools, first up is our high schools. And so as highlighted in the superintendent's good news report, both of our high schools exceed expectations. And that is hard to do in large school districts with multiple high schools. So this, our high schools, over the pandemic and within the district report cards, have really carried us with their high, I mean, very high growth scores and their attainment scores.
Can that be a terminal, can we contribute that to growth?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, because if you look, maybe our scores are not where we hope for them to be sometimes, you know, at elementary level or wherever. But, you know, growth must be, those learners, our students must be coming in and growing, growing to get to that level at the high school level. So, you know, in my opinion, if someone's looking at, where can my kid learn and get a really good education, regardless of where they're starting out at, to me, that's a really positive thing because you're showing kids are learning a lot. Because you're not getting that growth if they're not learning a lot. So anyways, thanks.
Absolutely. And if you go, and I believe it is page four of each of the school report cards, if you look at both Oshkosh West and Oshkosh North, they're, they're touching like 80 or 90% higher than the other high schools in the state when it comes to growth. I mean, it's, it's amazing. So, well, well done, Oshkosh West and Oshkosh North.
And we've had conversations in the past when we look at the elementary and the opportunities we have there. But the message has always been the growth that, for the kids when they get to high school, as you said, like, you know, and that, that's really kind of the, the proof of that, so.
We're building, we're building that foundation.
You know, and that has to be the whole system working together. You know, elementary, middle. So that's, I mean, I contribute those numbers to, that's great.
There was, there was a kindergarten teacher behind every single one of those children.
Yeah.
So going into, going into our middle school, you can see where our middle schools are at. We did have three middle schools that meet few expectations. We already have plans in place for those, for the three middle schools. And once again, we receive our data well into the summer and knew exactly where we needed to have improvements. And for each one of those, plans are in place for every single one of them, and they're working their plans. And sometimes it's asked, well, what specifically are you doing? Well, it depends on the school. It depends on where they're, they're either not having growth or they're having growth or those pieces. And so for each one of them, they have individualized school plans to push, to push and support students based on what their specific needs are. And then as we go into Tipler and exceeds expectations, both Traeger and ALPS significantly exceed expectations, and Traeger being up a category, which is also a celebration. And you saw Traeger recognized in the superintendent's good news report as well. Going into our elementary schools, we do have two elementary schools that meet few expectations. But just like our three middle schools, we already have plans that are well into place, and I'll talk a little bit more about those and how they relate to our early literacy, our early literacy goals. And then the rest of our elementary schools either meet or exceed expectations across the board.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I asked this at Education Committee, but I just want to ask it here. We see the results, and obviously, some of the schools are at, you know, few expectations. So I guess the question is, you talked about having a plan in place. I'd love to know, like, you know, how did the staff, how did the leaders, the principals take that? You know, what, what, how are they feeling about that? And, you know, what does that look like? Because sometimes that, you know, obviously, the numbers are what they are, but, but there's a bigger story to tell, so I would love to know.
Yeah, I mean, I can just share one example, you know, from a school and that corresponded with, with the principal. And the principal that was, meets, meets few expectations. And their response was exactly where I'd like it to be, right? That they're, you know, certainly disappointed with the results, but have some resolve of working together to move forward, have a clear, you know, vision, understand what they, what they need to do, and are not making excuses across the board and are just rolling up their sleeves and getting to work. So it was really hard to hear that, you know, that, that, and I offered to be able to, you know, come over and be able to, you know, just give a little, maybe a little bit of cheerleading and that type of thing. And, and not that I had to go over there, but just to try to, you know, to be present. And I was actually said like, no, we got this. Like, you don't need to come over, which, you know, okay. But, but I think that, for me, that showed like a sense of responsibility and ownership for the data, and I think that's the, that's where it has to start. Like, you really have to take responsibility for what the results are. Again, we all want these scores, all of these scores to be higher as we go. But I think, you know, living in that space and owning it first, and then to really say, you know, we've got this, and we've got plans specifically to move forward. Julie and Kim and our directors are always checking in to see what supports are needed, whether it's resources, professional development. After all of our professional development, we do plus delta wanderings to make sure that we're hitting marks, and if we are not hitting marks, what can be done? You know, so that's just a continuous improvement, you know, part of our continuous improvement processes as we're, as we're moving forward. So, I mean, that's a, you know, that's, that's my example. I don't know, Julie, if you have more to share.
No, exactly. And it's like, well, and, and here's the other thing, is that we knew that, we knew where the data was going to land, like I said, back in, back in the summer. And so it's like, we're already working, we already have our plans in place, we're monitoring student data, we have interventions in place, we have new resources in place. And so for us, when this information comes out, it's almost like it's old, like it's old news, right? Like, well, actually, this happened last spring, and we're well on our way to, you know, improvement, and we can already see improvement in our students. So when we do that, our, the leaders in our building are really taking that, like you said, that responsibility, nobody, everybody was like, I got this. If you want to come, we had other schools that said, come celebrate with us, right? And be able to do that, but they're, they're ready to get to work and make sure our students have what they need.
Julie, I have a question.
Sure.
Are we seeing that the data is consistent with what you mentioned earlier, that there's a correlation between economically disadvantaged students, that percentage and the, the score correlation?
Um, yes and no. So so, for example, there are there are schools that actually are like are beating the odds and bending the trend line. And so the way that they're scoring and the percent of students that are economically disadvantaged, like, they're bending that they're bending that trend. And that's what we wanna see for all of our schools, is to be able to bend to bend that trend. So not necessarily across our school district is that is that happening. So but I can tell you that every single school that has high growth has high scores on the school on the school report card. And so what our next move is, is not only high growth scores, but to have the high achievement scores with it. And you can't get achievement without growth.
So are we having conversations around, like, putting more resources, like, so that there is an equitable distribution of staff and resources into the schools that are?
Yep. So if you if you go into some of our key communications, let's start with, we've set the rigorous reading goals. And then Dr. Davis has already referenced our rapid cycles of improvement that are going into place, our student coaching cycles. We have purposely placed and added staff in different areas so that we can have supports in place. And specifically, at the middle school, we've purposely placed, like, interventionists to get students up to grade level rapidly, along as our new literacy resources that address the phonological awareness, the phonemic awareness, the letter identification. All of those pieces are put into place, and we're not into we're not into places systemically last school year. So that's gonna be a big difference as we're coming, and we're already seeing that difference coming. But in the very last bullet, each school has that school improvement goal and action plan. We have absolutely deployed resources, whether it be curriculum or instructional resources or staff to areas that need it. Another example would be, since I oversee the ESOL program, when we've had shift in student populations, and now that we've had additional, we reached a hundred students at North, we take a look at where our staff is within the school district, and we have, like, actually shifted, you know, where have we gone down? And we've shifted our staff, we go where the students are, and we've actually shifted staff for more for more assistance and more for more help and support in classrooms. So those are some of the examples of what we're doing.
Thank you.
I believe at one point, you said that in January, we'll do a snapshot test to so we don't have to wait until the end of June, there we'll be able to see our progress mid year.
Correct. Correct. So so at the elementary level, we are actually looking in literacy, we're looking at, every month, they are looking at common formative assessments in those rapid cycles. In math, we are doing our first, in the K five and in six eight, we're doing our first dipstick in AVMR in grades three through eight, did their eye-ready diagnostic in the fall, and those results were mailed home. And I know there are parents that are around this board table that got their results, along in math and in literacy. So for our three eight, we will be doing that mid-year piece. Some of it has been happened right before break, and some of it'll happen right after break. So we will know, and we will shift plans, those school improvement close and action plans will shift based on where our dipstick or diagnostic ends up. And we're already shifting based on our monthly common formative assessments for students at the early elementary level.
Thank you.
And I'm really excited for that information, because to me, this data is good and great, but, you know, it's a lagging indicator of
Yep.
a lot of the new things and steps that we've taken and, you know, that we've taken as a district to try to improve those scores. So, you know, really, we're gonna have to, I'm excited to see what that new, you know, new information tells us as far as where we're going. So, thank you.
Julie, could you review for us, please, with our ESOL students? I know there are levels, I believe there are five levels of proficiency.
Correct.
Which, and five would be the highest level of proficiency. So at what level do ESOL teachers participate, students, rather, excuse me, participate in this assessment?
At all levels.
At all levels, so even the level ones?
Correct. Even even level even level one students new to the country. So students that are new to the country, they can be, we can exempt them, or we can opt them out of the one year of the English Language Arts within the first twelve months that they are in the country. They have to take the rest of the assessment. So and right now, access for ELs, which is the language, English Language Proficiency Assessment that we do, that we're required to do annually by the state of Wisconsin, we are doing that right now with our ELs, we're actively in the window.
Very good. Thank you. Because I, we had a slide earlier from Dr. Davis noting that we now have a hundred ESOL students at North, which to me is a reason to celebrate.
Absolutely.
That we are an inclusive and accepting community of people who have come to this country seeking a better life. And the challenges that those students face are are numerous. And trying to learn English, and if you're a high schooler, trying to learn content at the same time in that language. So it's a tribute to our our staff and our students and our families to try to improve the English-speaking skills at the same time, adjust to the new content in a new language.
And keep in mind that our students that are that are coming to us, not are not, most of them are not only bilingual, but they're multilingual, depending on where they have, where their backgrounds are and where they've come from. And so we have some really amazing students with us in the Ashkosh area school district.
So if we could assess them in their home language, it probably would make a difference on the content.
But that that's not the, that's not our rules that we, that's not our, that's not our accountability piece. Yeah.
Could you go to the slide before that, please?
This one?
Yes. I thought what struck me on this slide is that we have more than half, actually fifty-four percent of our schools that are significantly exceeding or exceeding.
Yes.
And I think that's just outstanding. That is really telling of the improvement we had. And then I just had a quick question of, you told us this last time, what grade bounced back from COVID faster? Did you say it was mine?
High school.
Oh, high school.
Yes. And then also, eighth to ninth grade is a huge is a huge jump in growth.
Okay. So the older kids are bouncing back faster than our younger learners.
That does make sense.
Correct. Yeah, when you think about it.
Yep. Yeah, they over in all of our data points, our youngest learners have been most impacted by pandemic learning.
Which makes sense, because you can't learn to read and write in a virtual setting. It's just not.
It's
We did it. We obviously did it, and we made it work, but it's not ideal.
It's tough.
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
Other questions or comments?
I'll say something. You had asked a question or said something a little bit ago that got me thinking, like, referring to how economically disadvantaged and the outliers. And the one that always comes up when we were looking at it was Emmeline Cook.
Correct.
And principal rule and the job that he's doing there is incredible, because you look at kind of overshooting based on on the demographics from what the trends would tell you. And that just gives me hope that that's what's possible everywhere in our district. Last week, I had the chance to go to two schools and just kind of check them out. One of them was Oakwood, and one of them was Reed. And while they're separated by a very small distance, and Ashkosh were not that big, the schools are incredibly different, the demographics and the breakdowns. And so I know everyone is aware here in this room, but I still challenge to to how do we redistribute our our resources? How do we help and make sure that, you know, everyone has the opportunities in all the schools to have, you know, to succeed? Because the challenges between those two schools was absolutely incredible. And I'm wearing my Reed shirt tonight, but, you know, they are they are incredible. And I was very much excited to see them both and to see what they do, and I'm proud of everybody in each one of them. But it was just coming into this conversation after we'd already talked about our education, and then going into the schools, it was just seeing Emmeline Cook is kind of that, that is what's possible. And I think that that really gives me hope that, you know, we can get there.
Bend the trend.
And I think that also gives resolve when I talk to our principals who are, you know, on their way towards that. I think that's, I think that hope gives them resolve that they can do it, that there's a path to be able to do it.
Correct.
And that our new system of, again, those rapid cycles of improvement, again, they're they're feeling like they're making progress, because they are making progress. When you're doing that on a monthly basis, you know, it's one thing to do that a couple times a year and then get the score another three or four months later, when a new cohort of kids is right in front of you, it's a little disconnected, just the way our assessment system works, but it's a little bit disconnected. It's a whole nother energy when you have your assessments of the kids that are in front of you, and you have an opportunity with them to know where they are, and then, you know, build them up a little bit, and then celebrate, and then build them up a little bit. Like, that's a whole different dynamic, and that's really, you know, it's a credit to Julie and Kim and Linda and the responsive program that they've put together. It's really, it's really a game changer, you know, for us. And again, we'll see, I anticipate us being able to see those results in our upcoming years. And but, yeah, it's it's exciting and gives gives me hope, too, as we're moving forward.
And then our community is also listening to us. Today, I had a meeting with two community members on a different topic. And as they, as I was walking them to the front to the front door, one of them said to me, oh, and by the way, I've been volunteering two days a week at Oaklawn. I'm I'm a reader with students in grade one, and I'm helping with spelling and other interactive writing at grade two. And so I go two days a week. And I said, did you go because of the, you know, what we said at the board meet? And she goes, yes, actually, I did.
That's awesome.
So right there, you know, our community is listening to us. So two days a week at Oaklawn, so.
I just have a couple things. One, I'm really optimistic about the future. And two, just because sometimes I, I mean, I try to do it everywhere I go, but really, the hard work is being done by our staff and teachers, you know, and principals and people that are putting in that hard work. So I know that, I think the rest of the board feels this way, too. We just can't thank them enough, and you, or I can't thank them enough and you enough for all of the, and everyone else has been involved with this, with all the work that you guys have put in. So, I mean, all that hard work, you know, is really, really, I think, appreciated by the community as a whole, because it's a lot of work. So I just don't wanna, sometimes we talk about systems a lot and scores and numbers and forget to talk about, you know, who's who's doing it all and making it happen.
Right.
Thank you.
I'll send Mr. Rainham.
So Julie, so E. Cook is one of those schools that has been accepting a lot of refugee communities.
Yes.
And it's a good reminder to myself and to our audience that, you know, having these multilingual students really is an asset. When we refer to those students, that they're often called like English language learners, and not that that's a negative term per se, but just a reminder that that bilingual or multi-language really is an asset, and they must be doing something right as far as having them feel belonging and inclusive in that community. So thank you for leading that.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone has ever believed that being a teacher is easy. And certainly, we've seen over the last several years the challenges that a pandemic have wrought across this country and in our classrooms. And for the learning like to be out there and to make this kind of growth is really outstanding. I continue to say, I truly believe that we have some of the best teachers in the state of Wisconsin in this district, and they've done a lot of heavy lifting. It's not only been the teachers, it's been the paras, the principals and the central officers who support them. So we're grateful.
Yep. Behind every single one of those numbers is a full school community that that's been working really hard to make sure that every single student meets their hopes and dreams.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much. And we'll look forward to your next report and further growth.
All right. With that, we move on to the consent agenda, resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a private prior meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. So I would entertain a motion to accept the consent resolution agenda as written.
So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Hershon?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Aye.
Resilience carries.
Thank you very much. Then we move on to individually considered resolutions. Okay, resolution number ten. Be it resolved that the Ashkosh area school district board of education hereby directs the WASB delegate to support resolutions forwarded to all WASB members prior to the convening of the assembly. Be it further resolved that the WASB delegate is directed to vote on amendments or resolutions that arise from the floor of the delegate assembly in a manner that is consistent with the position of the original resolutions as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with the rights rules, excuse me, the rules, regulations, and policies of the Board of Education.
So move. Second? Sorry. Thank you. I just want to point out a couple of these resolutions, but I can hear the rain on the roof, and I know we're all anxious to get out of the weather on our way home. There's a resolution twenty-three point zero two, which actually originated from this school district. Two of our graduated seniors, Annika Larson and Simone Labele, were responsible for coming forward with a suggestion that voter education be embedded in the K-12 curriculum at several points. And so that will go to the delegate assembly in January. What this means is that if it's adopted by the delegate delegate assembly, it becomes the basis for lobbying and promotion by the by the four hundred and twenty-one public school districts in the state and all the CISA districts. There is also one dealing with learning barriers for students with disabilities. This would remove some out-of-date language and make sure that parent involvement is is included in the removing of those barriers. There's also one twenty-three oh five that ensures that students with disabilities are not discriminated discriminated against by disciplinary practices. There's another one in here that requires private schools, it's twenty-three oh eight. Private schools participating in a parental choice program would have to accept and provide services to students with disabilities. They wouldn't be able to just rely on the public school districts to provide that if they're accepting the money for those students. There's another one dealing with the FORT requirement, which some of our teachers would be interested in. This would provide that anyone seeking a teaching license with an alternate pathway to licensure that does not require passage of the foundations of reading test. That's a test that has been removed from those seeking licensure to become special ed teachers, and this proposal would remove that from all staff. One of the things that Ms. Conrad was talking about in her recent workshop had to do with some of the societal issues that impact our students. And this resolution would support increasing evidence, excuse me, increasing efforts and evidence of local government, private organizations, businesses, and families in providing prevention, early intervention to address problems in our communities to allow students to focus on their academic achievement. And there is a further one, which I'm not finding right away here. It would, it would address an issue related to the vouchers beyond providing services to all special needs students, but it would require the voucher program schools to for those, the funds to support voucher schools would come from the state, they would not come from local districts, which right now has an impact of over four point seven million dollars on our on our district budget. So this would move that responsibility to the state, and would provide more funding than for students not only in our district, but any district where voucher monies are accepted. So that's kind of a high-level overview of some of the items that are on the on the docket for when Ms. Mrs. Carlin serves as our delegate at the state convention in January. If you have any other questions or comments on those, I try my best to to answer those. I'm not an expert on these, but I did participate in in forming this list. Mrs. Carlin?
Yes, I was just going to mention that I received my delegate packet in the mail yesterday, I believe, and it is an honor and privilege to be able to represent our district. I look forward to it. It's such an exciting convention.
Wonderful. Wonderful. That is on the Wednesday of the convention. If any of you who are attending would like to sit in on that, you may certainly do that. But Mrs. Carlin will be the only representative, a person representing this board there. I will be representing the WASB and will also have a vote.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
So is it, so every year, there's a bunch of these that go through for approval by the delegate, delegate assembly?
It's actually called the Policy and Resolutions Committee. And it's made up of 30 board members from across the state.
So what happens, I guess, what's the likelihood of those getting passed, you know, by, by the government? What's the, what's the success rate of, of that?
There's, there typically is a high success rate of whatever the list is for the current year being adopted by the delegate assembly. Beyond that, I, I don't have a percentage. I do know that a year ago, there was a resolution that passed, which was written to provide for an increase in special education reimbursement funding for every district. And I believe the proposal was to raise it to 60% reimbursement. There was an amendment offered on the floor of the delegate assembly to raise it to 90% and that passed. Well, we know it's not 90%, but there are some people who believe that the legislature is in a position to increase the amount of aid for special education reimbursement because they know, at least some of them have come to know that if you do that, you benefit all students. Because right now, the money to support our special education students beyond the reimbursement comes from the general fund. And this would mean we wouldn't have to take as much money from the general fund. We have a moral obligation to educate those students. It's the right thing to do. But it costs more. So we're asking for a greater reimbursement from the state, which was promised years ago. Not 90%, but higher than what we're currently getting.
I guess I'm just wondering if it does get accepted. And then obviously that goes on to the legislature and we're trying to, you know, lobby for passing of that. I just wonder what the success, you know, do we, do they do a good job of getting these resolutions passed? And if they don't pass, do they bring them back next year or do they fall off? Do they have to be, like, let's say the voter education doesn't get passed by the government after it gets accepted by the delegate assembly. Does that just fall off or does that continue to come back around?
That stays, they continue to expand their list.
It'll, okay. So there's a, there's a rolling list that keeps going that we keep fighting for. Once it's accepted by the delegate assembly, it's, it's there. Okay.
And that amendment that we made last year, it becomes a discussion. So it can take hours for the delegate assembly to go through all of the resolutions. So it's a very long and interactive day and I find it really worthwhile. And anyone can attend.
What time of day is that one on Wednesday?
It's in the afternoon. It's in the afternoon. And you can, anyone can attend. So it's open to everyone.
Great.
Any further discussion or comments on what Mrs. Carlin will be voting on, representing you?
Nope.
All right. Then please call the roll.
Herson.
Aye.
Carnes.
Aye.
Lee. Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll move on to requests for future agenda items. Is there any board member who would like to suggest a future agenda item? Not tonight. Okay, any announcements at this point?
I'll beat you to it. Bandorama this weekend.
Oh, Bandorama.
So Saturday night at Ashgash North, 6:00 PM, I believe it is. So that should be a fun event for all the middle school and high school band. Is orchestra included or is it just band?
I believe it's band.
Oh, Bandorama, of course, it's band, so.
My wife puts 6:00 PM on my Outlook calendar, so.
That must be true.
Yep. It's gotta be the time.
That's great.
And you can follow that up with the performance at West High School Sunday afternoon. I believe that's at 2:00 and there's no Packer game on Sunday. So that will be band, orchestra and chorus performing. And then the North Choir and Corral perform next week. I'm not sure of the date. I think it's Tuesday night. But check the district calendar. If you, if you really want a good time, go to any of our musical performances in the month of December. It's an awesome experience. Students performing for the first time on the stage and others who are pros at it. And it's, it's just great seeing the accomplishments of our students and the support they get from their, their teachers, other staff members and their parents. All right. And we probably should note Bandorama, properly notice that because it sounds like several of us will be attending Bandorama on Saturday night.
Yeah, at least three of us have kids in it.
Okay. Wonderful.
I'll be there.
I'll be there too. All right. Any other announcements? Well, we're coming up on a holiday period next week. And I'd like to extend a safe and happy holiday period, regardless of what holiday you observe or holidays you observe to all our students and staff. And I hope that it's a, it's an enjoyable time for everyone. Welcome. At this juncture, I would accept a motion to move to executive session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.85.1, paren 1, paren E, a discussed potential purpose of a property. So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
I'm so sorry, I didn't hear who the second was.
It's me.
All right.
I won that one.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Solaji.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Carlin. Aye.
Herson. Aye. Thank you very much. We are now adjourned.